Right there, it says Saffron. Oh, no problem.
Hello Jackie.
All right, we're gonna get started tonight. First thing I'd just like to, just out of respect for the Rosenberg family, you know, we did recently lose Vera Rosenberg. We just have a moment of silence for her, longtime resident. All right, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Aaron?
Present.
Jacob?
Present.
Jason?
Here.
Victor?
Here.
Jackie?
Here.
On the agenda, I just asked that we could add the letter of concern with the PD in a local business to the agenda and also the pay rate for Randy Smith.
Under your name?
That's fine, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with those additions. Second.
Clint, can you explain a little bit that emergency place?
The adding of it, yes. So...
We received this letter Friday.
Yes, so the letter that was transmitted to the city on Friday to discuss that, the agenda had already been posted. All we need to do to add it is because of the short timeframe in which it came in after the agenda and the importance of getting it discussed, so a direction could be decided. Just put that in the minutes Jackie.
Okay.
And I just would recommend that you confine the deliberation of that to something that will come back to you in the future or no action, one of the two.
Was there a motion and a second to approve the agenda with those changes?
Make a motion to approve.
Yep, we got a motion and a second.
Any public comment? Roll call please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda?
I had a question either on receipts or financials. We have the 83,000 for the van. Is that covered under insurance or is that?
It's about a 13,000, it's a $13,000 cost. Insurance was right at 70. We upgraded five years.
Okay. No, I just wanted to know. Can we get notes on like discrepancies like that, just so it's to some capacity, if like it's over a certain amount?
I mean Jackie normally handles the insurance claim.
I've handled all insurance claims.
Oh, not all insurance, just like if there's any big discrepancy, I'm like the financials if it's, I don't know what number anyone's comfortable with, just that way it's, we don't have to bother you about 20 different questions or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, I really don't approve anything unless it's in the budget.
We didn't have to make a motion to buy a new van, like we do all the other vehicles?
On insurance proceeds, would I have to go through council approval to replace?
13,000 against it.
So whatever your normal procurement policies would apply, but if it's replacing a vehicle in an emergency situation that was destroyed, I mean, you may have provisions for that.
Maybe we need to look and see if we do.
We had to replace it. I mean, nobody disagrees that we didn't need to replace it.
Whatever other vehicle we've always discussed.
Whenever it's over 25,000, I try to bring it to the council's attention for action. Like you say, this was kind of an emergency deal. The insurance covered the majority of it. We did upgrade five years, but there was a cost, 13,000.
The original purchase price in 2020 was 53,146 dollars. In April of 2020, the new cost was 83,910 dollars, which was obviously inflation due to COVID. Insurance cost 70, covered 70,625. Pocket 13,285.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just want to add one thing. We still haven't had the minutes corrected from February. They're still on the website with change that needed to take place.
And who is Dual Stop? An eye, liquor license renewal for Dual Stop. Who's that?
Dual Stop is Jump Start, the one down on the...
11th and Locust.
A couple of years ago they changed their name. It's still called Jump Stop on the line, but their legal name for their LLC is Dual Stop.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Any public comment? Roll call please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
First item, Kim Smith. I don't see her. Dave Huey?
There she is.
Do you want me to sit back now?
You're all right, you're up.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Dave Huey, the fire chief as you all know, and I'm here again to revisit a few things. Number one, at a workshop, I presented a pay change for our personnel. It's not a budget change. We're still within budget by calculations. Just asking that the council approve a calculation change as I had submitted to you guys at that time.
Did you resubmit them calculations to us?
Did you need it again? I didn't.
Probably did.
What, isn't that where we left off? We had made a change to it or added some, something to it I thought was gonna get?
Right, we did.
Back the adjustment.
And we sent it back to you guys and didn't hear anything more. It's the, it doesn't cause any difference on the city administration side because Phil does all the calculations. And currently he just sends in how many calls someone did and then what their pay rate is. And so it would just change the pay rate based, again if you remember, on time of service and skills.
I do remember that.
I was for it.
I thought, I actually thought it was done.
I did too. I thought we made it. Is it in the packet?
When I brought it up at the last...
We said we wasn't sure.
That no one addressed it.
You discussed it during the workshop, but you've never made any motion to adopt the new pay.
We'd have to put it on our agenda the next meeting. We can't vote on it tonight.
Yeah, we can't vote on it because it's on the agenda, but I need to see it again. I guess for some reason I thought I was, we were still waiting on something. That's why nothing's been done.
Get everybody updated copies. I believe you have the support for it.
I thought you had, but I'll send them again. Okay. And then I came up with a date for our public meeting for the building. It's gonna be July 9th at 6:00 PM over at the fire station. And then that way if anyone has any questions that we can walk them through and show them, you know, what, what ProHaska, our company that we did the assessment.
What was the date again?
July 9th, which is a Wednesday.
That's open to the public?
Nine in the morning?
Six.
It's open to the public. We're gonna put it on the marquee at 6:00 PM. And then don't forget, the last Saturday, oh man, I just lost the date. What is that, 27th of July? Is the festival and our Rock the Boot concert along with that followed by the fireworks. Is that day as well. And that's all I had to bring forward to you.
All right, just make sure you get an updated copy of those.
Right.
Yes, we're for it. It's a go.
All right.
Thought I'd send them.
Email that to me.
Okay. I'll send them again.
Because I don't have it in my folder of budget documents. I'm looking for it.
I know it's been very busy over there Dave. Thank your team for everything you guys are doing. I mean, you make us look good up here, those response times and keeping the community safe.
And I hate to say it, but this has been kind of a slow month, you know, because I don't want it to go off anymore. But I'm sorry, I did notice that there isn't, we had a new candidate that was supposed to be approved by the council at this one. You didn't receive the application? He was supposed to go last month and I thought Phil sent him over for this month, but I don't see him on the agenda to be approved.
Send him with the pay scale.
Okay. All right.
I don't have anything.
All right. I tried to get these guys going through fairly quick so we can get them trained and get them going before they get tired of waiting.
All right Dave, thanks.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks Dave.
Thanks.
Kim Smith, did she show up? Guess not.
I thought she said she walked in.
I thought she did.
All right, next item. Citizen of the year. This, every year it just gets harder and harder to choose. We have a a great group of people here that go above and beyond. You know, I've had some health issues and Mr. Gunnerson stepped up and and really fulfilled the part when, when he didn't have to. And if you look at just the participation he puts in as an elected official, goes above and beyond the call. So Mr. Gunnerson, the next mayor of Carter Lake is the citizen of the year.
Well deserved, well deserved.
He'll be signing autographs later. T-shirts?
All right, let's start with the easy one. Randy Smith. We discussed this at the workshop. What's the council's pleasure or what they want to do?
I can make a motion to move Randy's pay to $30 an hour. It's not just, it's kind of, it's getting him caught up and maybe a 3%, but it's, his leadership values, his time serves, his experience. He's the guy that has the most knowledge in the city right now. And if you want to drive somebody to do more, you gotta, you gotta give more. So that's where I think he should be to be relative to the city. And that's why I'd like to make a motion to move him to.
What title comes with that?
Is that the assistant?
Assistant?
Is that the assistant position?
I didn't want to label that because I wanted to kind of leave it for the city administrator that's coming into kind of place, but I believe that's, that's what he is. I mean, that's what he does. And right now, just, I mean...
I thought he was a super jitter.
One of the many.
Sometimes, not a lot of times.
I second the motion.
So motion and second, any public comment? Roll call please.
All right, one question. Will we make that effective immediately?
It'd be in the July, it'd probably be in the July?
July.
July budget. It'll be in the next, the next cycle. All right?
Sounds good to me.
Don't get so excited Randy.
I hear you. Quick and easy.
Roll call please.
There's a lot coming with it, believe it.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes. The next item, I think we're all aware of the letter that was sent to us with a concern about a local business in the police department. I just, I just want some direction on, on the council, how they want to handle this. As far as everything I looked at, they're not breaking city policy. City policy allows them to do what they're doing. That letter was sent to other law enforcement agencies. I did speak to the sheriff and I did speak to the county attorney. We're not law enforcement. We're not here to investigate crimes. We're here to to enforce policy. So I just want some direction on what the council wants to do.
Trying to find the letter. Give me a minute.
Clint, what's our options?
Well, I think that you would have the option of, if there was concerns from a management perspective, that you wanted to look at the employment situation as an employer, you could have someone do an investigation into it. Since it involves a public safety department, there are standards that you have to follow that are in Iowa code, that Iowa code ADF. And I would recommend you hire an independent investigator that does those, that's someone who's from that background. There are people available to do that. It doesn't mean that they make a finding of anything negative. It just means that they follow the appropriate procedures to have interviews and, and discuss things with people because there are due process standards for them that you gotta follow. And then the other would be to revisit your local policies on outside employment. You know, you're, that is entirely within your control. You don't have to allow any outside employment, just within your discretion to allow it. You know, not allow it, allow it with conditions, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Can we?
I would say that it is standard to, that some of that is allowed. You know, there's tons of events, you know, if you go to the casinos, you go on, I just go by the College World Series, you know, I'm sure most of the people down there are some version of that, so I'd look at it carefully and make sure that you are keeping the employment of the department like attractive, you know, because people will want to do that, but also addressing your concerns that it runs right.
What is it, would it be unheard of just to allow it but not within our city? I mean, it puts our department in a bad position when the upper levels of their departments, I guess it's, I don't know, when they get a call, they have to show up there and their bosses are the ones that are showing up there.
Yeah.
There.
What I'd really recommend is if you, is to limit your discussion tonight on, if you want to pick some options, if you want to revisit a policy, we could definitely bring forward a lot of examples and work with the people that we would need to, to develop something new with, you know, alternatives that you could consider. Or if you wanted to look into the other allegations, you hire the investigator. You know, I would, I don't think you'll figure anything out here tonight. You know, you need to gather more information, think about it more. And I believe the mayor's intention was just kind of to take your temperature and figure out how to move forward, so you know, we weren't sitting in limbo of, you know, what do we do? Because we don't have the authority to really do anything without you guys and you guys need to have a meeting in order to act on anything, so I think that's really kind of... I don't want to be labeled as not having, not doing anything or not being part. So earlier in the year, we were, we had a, what do you want to call it again? I've lost the words here. A review of somebody over being mean or allegations here at work and these allegations are just as wrongdoing or, you know, unsettling. So I mean, I think it warrants an investigation. So I mean, if that's the right way to do it and what should be done, then that's, the council probably should move forward in allocating funds to do that. And typically, the mayor under your code is the authority that would be responsible for that and he would need assistance on that. I could work with him and whoever ended up there and I think you just need to, you know, authorize those things if that's what you want to do.
I mean, I think everybody, the sheriff was on there, the county attorney was on there, state attorney, like those are the people that do investigations in my opinion. I mean, if they saw something concerning on there, they're gonna do their investigation. It doesn't do us any good to hire a private. I mean, I don't know what they're gonna find out. I mean, that, but I don't know.
Well, we gotta try to stand by the other officer for her, their credibility. You know what I'm saying? So I think the investigation is worthy.
That's what I'm looking for, just direction. It don't sound like the council's gonna agree on this, just, I mean, the majority rules here, so you guys want to, want to make a decision, I will do whatever you say.
I would like, I would, my idea would be a policy change and get rid of the, get rid of the moonlighting or whatever you call it in town. That's what my, my thoughts would be.
I think the problem that comes though, you can't regulate them, but not regulate anybody else that would do it on the force, because that's, that's where it becomes sticky.
It would be a whole, a whole whole department. I mean, I'm just within town, like you have to hire private security in town if you need to. Or Omaha officers, somebody else.
Just couldn't do private security within the town, you're saying?
Our...
Didn't tell them they couldn't do private security at all?
No, our officers.
Within our town.
Yeah, because...
I was about to ask you too.
Please do.
Okay. You're kind of frustrating me a little bit here. You're taking something said by a gentleman and taking it out of content. You guys don't have no clue what happened with this. It's, it's a report that was taken. This gentleman come in months ago to my office, asked for some help, doing a records request. Give him everything you want. It sat down with him. I got him on video, talked to my officer that night, tell him how great I was helping him. Nobody else will do that for him. Four days later, because we don't do what he wants on a report, you get this letter. And that's what you guys are jumping to. And it's really starting to upset me. It's, it's, it's an allegation, it's just, it's ridiculous. It's honestly ridiculous. And y'all know me, most of you know me, you know better than this. You know for a fact Iowa ADA 22 says an officer can work off duty, security, anywhere as long as he's working for himself in 1099. And if you guys want to do an investigation, you want to look at my taxes, whatever you want to do, I could care less. You can do it. I've told the mayor this. I'm sick of it. I don't know what the problem is up here anymore. But if you got a problem, you can come to my office anytime you want. It's right over here. You guys can't find it. And you can ask me any question you want. I'll let you know. I've already told the mayor that too. So if you want to go off, some clown wrote this stuff, you go ahead and do it.
I did reach out to the gentleman who wrote the letter. He did call me back. I asked him for any evidence or documentation. At this time, he has not supplied any. So like Mr. Kennedy said, it's a bad allegation, but I mean, just because someone puts something in writing don't mean it's true. But I just, I need some direction from the council. I know a couple of you are frustrated that nothing's being done, so you tell me what to do, just like Clint said. It doesn't violate policy, so there, there really is nothing on a disciplinary action that I can do to him unless you want to change policy or you want to do as what Clint directed. Sure.
I'm, I just found out two days ago that I...
Just state your name.
Captain Driscoll, Josh.
Thanks.
That my name was mentioned this too. I had no idea what was going on. He filled me in on the whole backstory. Like I said, same thing. You want to see my taxes, that's fine, but you guys opened this investigation. It is basis as these allegations are, as soon as you open that, that's our permanent record. That stays on there whether you find out he's a crackpot that doesn't know what he's talking about or anything. That's, that follows me till I'm done in law enforcement. Now, my goal is to stay here for the next eight years, but if something happens, I need to go somewhere else. That is on there and there's no basis to any of it. So that's, that's all I gotta say.
What's the council's direction? Victor, you want to do the investigation?
I think we should go to, talk about it at a closed session. Someday.
How, I mean, we can't, we can't talk about the, everything about it, but there's a lot to be discussed about it. Especially move it to a different meeting if you... I really think all you should decide is either to direct the mayor to do something or not. You know, I don't think the point of this is to come up with the solution. It's to provide a direction for the future.
John, will you come back up for a minute? Like I say, we're not law enforcement. If there's really something to this, we, we don't need to direct the county attorney. The mayor, the council don't direct the county attorney to do investigations. It, it went to their office. If there's something to it.
The county attorney got the letter too. They handled DCI, Department of Criminal Investigations. If Matt Wilber believes that something's going wrong, he'll send DCI down here.
Do you believe that you should interview the officer named to let us know what goes?
Interview, what are you talking, I mean, what are you, what are you asking me, I guess, about her saying what she said?
Yeah.
I did, I already talked to her about it.
And...
That was 25 minutes into the call where he wouldn't stop about this lawsuit going on and she finally said, "Yeah, yeah, we understand, we know, we know." That's exactly what she told me she said. She was appeasing him to get him to stop talking.
So you believe that she doesn't know anything that's going on over there?
There's not, there's nothing going on. That we have any complaints about her, nothing. We've never had any calls on her for that at all.
I'm just saying, she's saying there was.
I understand what you're saying. I get it.
And you're saying she just appeased him.
And if you want to talk to her, if the mayor wants to talk to her, you can. That's what she told me.
I'm not an investigator, guys. If you want to hire investigator, do it. I'm, I'm not gonna...
Not either. I just don't want to be accused of somebody sitting here doing nothing.
That's why I brought it.
Crazy accusations are crazy and they're... I understand. I would rather not hear them. If we're doing nothing and there's nobody looking to them, I don't want to hear them, but when you do, it's like you get... Yeah. This is because he didn't get what he wanted. I totally agree. I spoke with him. I don't, I mean, I don't, I think the guy's kind of a flake. I think he was mad. But what he did on his other story... I do not. Yep, he had been sanctioned and... He's been sanctioned before for stuff like this. So, I mean, again, you guys, I'm not, I'm just, you guys do what you want to do.
Don't you think it's a bad look though for, I mean, you don't, for...
Jason, I've been doing it for 20 years down there.
I know, and it's not the first allegations we've heard of this.
It's the first one I've heard of. You know, and like I talked, when I talked to Mr. Grail, you know, you're talking about prostitution, you know, if, it's a strip club. If a girl gives a number to a guy and they leave that night or something, it could happen. I don't know. But it's not happening on the premises in front of me with a captain.
I mean, they mentioned drug use, no drug dealing, prostitution. I mean, that, there's many nightclubs in town that people...
He's making it sound like I'm standing there collecting money while she's getting it on the guy. That's what he's making it sound like. And I don't much appreciate this. And I mean, he might... That's kind of why I wanted to expose him for being lies. That's why we're just coming here making these kind of lies and craziness. I need to talk to Mr., I need to talk to our attorney about it. I've got other attorneys asking for his video because they're suing him for accusations making against their clients. Should we give it to him? So that's, that's where I'm at. He was, we're needing to meet about that. I told you, we need to meet about that to see what I can give out, what I can't give out, because I got certain things I have to do right way. Yep, and we can... So I mean, you, again, you take it however you want. You investigate whatever you want. I could care less. I really don't.
We just got the same letter you got.
I know.
We've had a discussion.
Oh no, I've got more. He's emailed me before. He's emailed other stuff. He's, my, my officer emailed me the night it happened, told me he's gonna keep coming, keep coming. That's what he does. So again, I, it doesn't break my heart. It doesn't get, it ain't gonna hurt my feelings if you investigate us. I don't care. But when you start talking about taking security away, that's money that we make on the side. You know, and Captain's been doing it, and I've been doing it for 20 some years. And we've never had problems like this. One allegation from this guy who's upset we didn't do what he wanted to do. That's where I'm at with it. So again, investigate it, do whatever you want with it. I could care less. But don't take the security away just because one, one guy said something like that.
So if you were sitting here and I was standing there, what would, what would your opinion be? Should we look into it?
Again, I don't care either way.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just saying if...
I guess my opinion is it was sent to the higher up authority. And if he doesn't look into it, then I guess it's a done deal. That's my opinion.
Everybody and their brother.
The sheriff's not gonna look into it. The sheriff's a direct backup to the PD. He felt that there is a conflict for him to look into it. Matt Wilber does not take direction from the city councilor or the mayor. If he feels he needs to investigate it, he'll investigate it.
That's what he said, I believe, is what you told me, I believe. But again, you guys do what you want to do. There seems to be, I don't know, seems to be some issues with my department and the council right now that I can't figure out and don't know what it is. But, and he's, like I said, it's right through that door there is where I sit. And anybody can call me or talk to me any goddamn time, excuse me, anytime they want.
Come on Tim, you can't talk like that.
I know. I'm aware of it. You're definitely accessible. So...
Yeah. I've never had no issues of being a get-hold.
I think, I would like to at least look at other policy options. So, if you could bring those back at a other meeting.
Sure, well, that's what the council wants to do.
So the council chooses not to do any action right now, that's just all I wanted. Okay? Next item, Jason, streets?
Streets, we got a, the drain down on, in the club, we had the street that's all tore up, between 190 and 203. We got the drain, that's where it's draining now, and we got an estimate to replace the asphalt on that street. First, but we're waiting on one more estimate. I'd like to direct the mayor, once we get that other estimate, to move forward with three asphalt on that street. I don't wanna read the estimate until the other people submit it.
This is Paul Bridge Road?
Yes.
I don't know what the numbers are down there.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to move forward with.
With the most affordable estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, I gave everybody a letter that the building inspector received. They would like some direction on what to do about it. He went back. It was about new homes that do not have sidewalks in front of them. The ordinance says all new homes have to have a sidewalk. He went back and said, these are the houses that have been built under his, under his watch, that don't have a sidewalk. I had initially told him, I initially told him, send them all a letter, put the ordinance in there, and tell them they had to put a sidewalk in, or we'll put one in at their expense. He didn't like that, he wanted direction from the entire council, so what's, what's the rest of the council wanna do? I mean, the, the ordinance says all new houses have to have one. If, if they don't like that, they should come and change the ordinance.
Yeah, no, I think you gotta follow the ordinance.
They're gonna follow the ordinance.
We've held many other new houses to the standard. Everybody that don't have one should be, be held to it.
I put them in when I built my house. Guy across the street put them in, Matt put them in his house.
So, do we wanna?
Give them ninety days, or have the city do it?
Ninety days. And then, I, I guess, how far do we wanna go back? I mean, all new houses and.
Anybody that's not done it, yeah. It's just a lack of us, again, I'm something I'm gonna speak about tonight, not falling up on ordinances. We have ordinances, and we can't pick and choose when to enforce what's right.
I built mine twenty-five years ago, and it had to be done, so.
So, um.
Twenty-five years forward.
By complaint, don't work.
What's that?
By complaint, that's the problem. It was by complaint. Nobody complained about them not building it, so it didn't happen.
Alright, so let's make a motion to direct them to, any new houses that have been built, send them a letter, include the ordinance.
I'm wording, I mean, we're talking about weed abatement under mine, but I'm wording, oh, ordinances. We know our ordinances, our employees know our ordinances. If we're viewing them, we're seeing them, we should be recording them.
What, you wanna give them ninety days? How many, ninety days to get a sidewalk put in?
That's discussable, I guess, but mandatory to do it, I mean, I guess.
How far back are you going, then?
Well, they shouldn't have got a, uh, I couldn't get a, uh.
Final.
Yeah.
To where?
An occupancy permit, until I was done.
Yeah.
They're gonna make it ninety days to at least have a, a plan, an agreement, that they're gonna, it's.
Or back as far as.
They've looked into it, it started.
Back as far as the ordinance has, has been in place?
Yeah, I mean, that's, the ordinance has been in place, so that's unfortunate.
Is there a year on that, to go off of?
I don't.
We'd have to know.
You have any idea when that went in?
I, I know that they had, their original list had five years.
Well, some of these properties got weird lot lines. How are they gonna determine where the sidewalk must go?
That'll be up the building inspector.
Let them come up with a plan.
Yeah, so that's, I think the start is at least the, the ninety days for the plan, cuz new house should have been established in the drawing and the plans. Site plan should have shown when it was done, so this should have been handled on the submittal of the, the permit. Probably each one of them need to be reviewed.
I'll make the motion to have him move forward with notification, and give him ninety days.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Grants?
Grants, we need to give Nicole some answers. She's been asking questions about whether we wanna apply for any of those, she needs answers. I'd like to move, I would like to make grants a permanent.
Like you said.
Item, put a permanent item at workshop, so every month, we just talk about them.
That's gonna be our best move, because the main thing we move on is the stuff we talked on the workshop before, and if it's not on the topic, we're kinda just discussing it right now, so. Let's get it on next Thursdays and talk about it again, and try to talk about it a little bit before then.
We have one Thursday coming up?
I'm sorry, the next Wednesday, I meant.
Is that, there, she sent an email today, needing answers on three of them. Do, do we want her to move forward with any of those, or no?
Well, that one for that $500,000 bathroom, I don't believe.
No.
Say no to that. Find it here.
I actually didn't get a chance to open that email today, so I'm not for sure. I apologize.
I'd read through them, but I didn't print them off.
So I'm not privy on which ones they are.
Or we will need, um, I'll just make a motion that we included on the workshop agendas, but at the next workshop, we need to get her answers.
So just permanently, every workshop, it's always a.
Just an item.
Yep. Second.
I don't think we need action to put that on the agenda, no, we're good. Anything else on grants, Jason?
Nope.
Jacob, minutes?
Minutes, Clint, we were talking about minutes in one of our sessions, in regards to, A, what minutes are required by law, in regards to council, that we should be getting, and then what's that, A, us, just council members are requesting. Can you differentiate that? Cuz we were told it by a third-party attorney that said, hey, was it, all, all minutes that council is sitting in should be posted publicly, correct? Or at least to council?
As a quorum? So, you're talking about the requirements for the.
The minutes that.
Or what happens to the minutes, or when they're taken, is that what you mean, or?
When they're taken, and what's, I guess, given, in regards to.
Just generally, anytime there's a meeting of the council, there has to be a record of, it, it doesn't have to be a, I think the mistake that a lot of people make when they think about minutes, is they think of them like transcripts, and they're not. It's a record of actions taken, and that has to be made at every council meeting.
So, what about workshops? Just, just a record of who's there, and what's on the agenda, then? Cuz there's.
Basically, yeah.
That's basically what we're doing.
There's no action being taken, so it's just a record of the attendance? Yep, and then they should be, I can't remember if it's ten or fourteen days, I'd have to.
If you go back to the ones that were done in two thousand, two thousand fourteen, by Doreen Mallory, you'll see an example of how they look at the budget meetings, and at the workshop meetings.
But do you need, do you just take the minutes, or do you need to post them somewhere, or what?
They're not required to be posted, they're required to be published.
Mm-hmm. And all those from two thousand fourteen are on our city website.
Yep, so you should have like a, what, is it, is it Nonparel or the World Herald, is?
The Nonparel.
Yeah. Yeah, so your newspaper of record is, is where they go.
Go.
What was everything you said? You asked me something else?
I don't remember what the second part was. I was trying to. Better understand what you're saying. I just wanna make sure that there's clarity around it, from what we went through, to make sure, eh, everything's getting done, or if it's a request from us.
Jackie and me have been talking, and I know she's on it, so I think we'll have more talks about that when we get into other things, so.
So we're in compliance with our minutes, then? Cuz one guy told us we wasn't.
That, that, um, issue was related to the closed session minutes. But there's some other rules about that, but.
So our regular minutes from the.
Like the workshop last week, we should have received those.
The Board of Adjustments, they're just written minutes?
Yes, every, anytime that there's a, um, meeting of a city board, commission, council, there, there should be minutes taken, but the only ones that are required to be published are minutes of the, uh, city council, and, and it wouldn't apply to your case, but you, utility boards also have to publish their minutes. Um, but every other board of the city, uh, should keep minutes of their proceedings, and be on file somewhere.
But the minutes are available to the public, if they wanna come to the counter and get them?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Go.
So.
That under public records, then?
Yes.
Is that how you get that? You put in a request, or is they should just be there?
Yeah, um, well, um, technically, an oral request is fine for public records, you have to, any, any form of request from the public is, and if they are able to be retrieved and transmitted to somebody, and with effort, that would take less than thirty minutes, they're supposed to be for free, but if they're more than that, then you can charge for it, too.
Okay.
So they don't have to be offered to us, so that we can see them and make sure.
Well, that's the council policy, you guys can always require that.
I thought we did, in that thing that we passed last January, that we wanted to see those.
Oh, I wasn't here, I don't know. But, um, if you, if you can definitely have, you're, you're, this meeting is for you guys, I mean, that's why.
Well, the thing is, we've had some issues with minutes not being accurate, so we need to be able to see them, so that we can.
Yeah, I understand what you mean. Yeah, but, yeah, you, you can require that as part of what you receive in your council packet, and I have towns that I work for, cities that, you know, they get all the board and commission meeting minutes, they get, you know, things like that, as part of the way you keep in communication with each other, you know, so you know what's going on.
But the main clarification of minutes are, are council actions. As far as a workshop, we show an agenda, and who's there. We don't have to document every conversation, cuz there's no action taken.
No.
Okay.
And, you know, sometimes the, uh, it's, it's also very common to have, like, minutes that are for publication, and if the, if the clerk wants to have minutes that are, that, you know, clerk set of minutes is what I normally call them, they can add more detail, but the detail that's required to be published is, is just that.
Alright.
Go.
Employee reviews?
Employee reviews, can we get the documentation by, like, end of this week?
Yeah, I can.
And, I'm saying, end of this week, or, okay. Then we'll do that just by Wednesday, so then everybody has it. And then, purpose for us, just with, uh, employee reviews, rolling those out, is just, those would start end of, or beginning of July, I think, a fair timeline on of, anyone in the council thinks. Roll it out by July, get it done by July fifteenth, hopefully have everybody do their reviews. Do we want supervisors to do their reviews?
You do typically.
Kind of like vice versa, so you're getting a duel.
The council, and, well, depending on how you wanna do it, uh, I see it a lot as either a mayor can do them on their own, it could be a committee of the council with the mayor, and it's usually like the mayor and two, two other people, or the council as a whole. Um, and, but that would relate only to supervisory, or like, like appointed positions, and then the line staff would be by their supervisor.
Okay, yep, and that's what I wanna clarify, just supervisor doing their employees.
Yes.
And then we'd roll that out July first, have the documentation. I can put together, uh, like a memo to send out to all city employees, just so you don't have to try and put everything together, I think, from a.
Yeah.
That standpoint, so you're not the bad person. If they have any questions, they can always roll it up to us, and we can help with it, and then fifteenth, try and get everything back to supervisors, and then that way, it's all taken care of for the first year. I don't know, do you recommend doing it every six months, every twelve months? What's your, from an employer standpoint? I know people do it differently.
I think the main thing to think about when you go into it is operationally, it's your chance to talk to the employees, to understand, um, you know, give them the directions that you need, so they understand their, their work functions, and what their expectations are, and also get feedback from them on what may be needed in the city, to help them do their job, or future training opportunities, that kinda thing. And if you run into, so, that, that's a good yearly discussion, but if you're running into disciplinary problems, and those kinda things, you should follow those up with, like.
Performance improvement plans?
Aggression plans, and things like that, to where you may, you may do them more often, but, yeah. I, I would not do it more than every six months, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Jacob?
Nope.
Aaron, weed abates?
Uh, earlier in the week, we had discussions, Bob had brought up about the uncomfortableness of giving out the orange stickers to people that aren't mowing their lawns. And we had talked about ordinances, and how we give out abatements and stuff like that, and I, I just think it's, uh, more respected by the citizens, and more professional to have the officer give abatements. Uh, when the officers are running around all day long, looking, and they, they should be reviewing yards, looking at yards, I think they're more familiar with code. I think they should be the one reviewing ordinances, giving abatements, knocking on doors, that kinda thing. So I'd like to make a motion to, to put it to the police force to be handing out the, uh, the abatements to different residents.
Come on up.
Are you opposed to having a specific officer? I don't even care if we know what officer.
No, I'd say the chief, it's just chief delegate, I mean, whatever officer on duty, if there, people start reviewing it, and, you know, looking at things, cars parked in their yards, off the grass, unregistered vehicles.
Beers hiding in the.
I mean, just, move, vehicles that haven't moved for weeks, sitting for weeks.
Yeah, because you get this stuck in your door, and the only reason I knew about it was cuz my daughter-in-law came to my door, and I have a ring doorbell. I really thought I was a solicitor at my door, I was working in the other area. I had no idea, so I didn't bother to go to my door, when my daughter-in-law came two and a half hours later. She goes, Mom, you have an orange flyer in your door. I go, yeah, it's probably some solicitor thing. She goes, yeah, and when I opened it, I was totally opposed.
Well, I, I'm gonna recommend we put them in.
And everything else, and I do have tall grass around my deer, I did that intentionally.
I know.
Everything else is cut down in front of it. I have pictures of it. My flowers are taller than the grass.
I would like for you to, to add to that motion, where, where they, they place that in the yard. In the front door's probably not.
It's not, because they didn't ring, they didn't knock, they didn't.
I, I, I'm not gonna send employees around the back door, I mean, the front, it's gotta be in.
The front door's fine, but they didn't knock, they didn't do nothing.
Well, that they.
Nothing.
It's, it's a courtesy, I mean, it's spelled out in code.
You got forty-eight hours to do this, or, okay, so, or what? How am I gonna get notified, if you are gonna do something? I have no idea.
Every time they send these out, I get these same, same people, fifteen phone calls, you know, my neighbor didn't mow his yard, why didn't they?
Well, no, the fact is, is on this notice, all you have to do is add how you plan on doing this. You tell me what you're gonna charge, you don't say how you're gonna be informed, how you're gonna be billed, nothing, nothing on here says.
We don't wanna mow grass, it's a violation courtesy that's, that the property owner mows.
It's a courtesy, but if it's not done within forty-eight hours, you're gonna do it according to this.
Yes.
But does it tell me how I'm gonna be billed? No. Does it tell me anything? No.
The hope is that you get that, and you just mow.
I get that. Mine was, my yard itself was mowed, I trimmed up, it was around my deer. I didn't do the rest of my deer, because that's part of the decoration of my deer.
You're mowing your yard, and that's your decoration, I would not mow it. I would not take it down. Mow your grass, and leave your decoration the way you want it, and fight it to the end.
It's been like way, two thousand eight.
I seen the pictures.
I mean, it's like, really, I mean, we, my husband went out there, and he started doing it, I says, you can do part of it, I go, but you dare touch my deer, and you are out of this house. Sorry, it's over with. I'm done.
Yeah.
I'm not, I told him, I go, I will fight the city, I will fight you, I'm not gonna sit here. They're my parents' deer, they're my neighbor's deer, they're no longer here with me, that's all I have. I'm not gonna sit here.
And she did trim some of that out, quite a bit of it.
I tried to do everything the city asked. I know they've got darts on my house, I know they got darts on me. You don't think I haven't figured that out for years? Since I left this city, I've known it.
Well, I, I don't believe that, I mean.
Well, Ron, you said that the last time I was here, but guess what? Here I am again.
Well, I, I'm, I'm kinda glad that they're putting a cone out measuring.
Street that could be noticed, and they never got anything, cuz you know why? I went up and asked them. They didn't get anything. So, I, really bothers me, that, yes, I do feel like it was been pointed.
I apologize for that.
Like I say, guys, I think it's best to post the yard, not the door, and, um.
Should we make the sign to change it, to get away from that sticker, then? Let's make this.
We can do that same sticker, just staple it to a post or something.
We're gonna change it. I want, and in the, in the ordinance, weed abatement deals, if we're gonna do weed abatements and mowing, we're gonna design a new sign, almost like a campaign sign, and it will be put in people's front yards, and it will be bright and obnoxious, and everybody will see it.
Whether you, you're gonna fill them, or you're gonna take a lien on their home, say that in the note, if you have to mow their yard.
Don't we have that, and there's an ordinance for it, right?
We've done that already.
Fill up my door the same way you put the, the, the flyer, the flyer in, I don't know, I have no idea.
I mean, Omaha has a, Omaha has a yard sign, they come stick in your yard, that says, this, this yard, this property is in violation of ordinance, whatever, but they stick it right, they stick it right in the yard.
I'll have that on the next workshop. We'll make, let's move forward with having the sign motion, and, and moving the police to, to activate it, and we'll discuss at the workshop, how to design the sign, the size of the sign, the word.
In the meantime, in the meantime, though, they'll just do the.
Yeah, so stick what we're doing now, and then the next meeting, we'll make a change on that, but right now, the, the police officers hand over abatements, and start enforcing ordinances.
In terms of collection, too, it's a letter by regular mail, giving them thirty days to pay the fee, and if you don't do, and that, they'd be subject to lien if not, and if you don't do that, you cannot enforce that part of it.
Okay.
I have a question, though, what am I supposed to do with my yard?
Mow it.
I did mow it.
Oh, you're fine.
Supposed to mow the rest of it, and take away the flower?
No, if you have a flower bed that you're designed your own way, and you are mowing your regular grass, leave it alone, leave it alone. Somebody's picking on you.
I know.
And they won't have my vote, and I believe they won't have the rest of these guys' votes, so stand your ground, and, and landscape your yard the way you want. I might be wrong for saying that, cuz somebody's gonna do something crazy, but we'll be down that road, I guess.
We don't want John to be homeless, either.
I know, I, I, it's perfectly fine, in my view.
Well, it's like I was saying earlier, um, people don't landscape the way they used to. They're into the native plants, they let those grow kinda wild in their yard, and I was talking to Clint. You've got plants that were considered obnoxious. They let those grow kind of wild in their yard. And I was talking to Clint, you've got plants that were considered obnoxious that nobody would ever have in their yard. And now we're, people are pushing the pollinators, the milkweeds, and at one time.
But how are we gonna have PD determine?
Oh, that's the problem.
They make a wrong decision on a flower bed that somebody designed. We can't stop them from doing that. They need to be looking at everything they think is wrong and tagging it. And a person like that that feels is wrong comes up.
It's a tough call.
It's a very tough, like I say, every time they send, they send out 20 of these, I get 10 calls.
I haven't seen anybody come up and said, Thank you for reminding me to mow my grass. Not there yet. When they do, I'll be happy, but.
Well, just keep in mind, it's 19-year-old kids that are posting those signs. They're told to post for weeds and grass. So it looks like if grass was inside of her flower bed.
Alright. Aaron, you want a motion? We're gonna.
I'd like to make a motion to move the.
The PD.
Feature to PD.
Okay.
With, with the business of looking at ordinances too, you know, unregistered vehicles, misparked vehicles, dilapidated things. You know, we had a vehicle on one road I seen that the truck was sitting there with a bloat-out tire off the rim for damn near a month. It just, they could be doing more while they're driving around, inspecting and looking. We can't just live on a call basis and expect everybody to turn everybody in.
The only, the only call, the only, I mean, we are not on call basis for vehicle parking violation. We're on call basis for structure issues and.
But there's many, I mean, right now, there's many vehicles. I'm not gonna go down the path of naming people. But I've actually reported a couple here recently to see if anything's done. And we don't do nothing. Nothing's being done. So we need to do something.
Lots of parking violations.
I'll second your motion to move it to the police department.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
We're not in the business of mowing grass, guys. Nobody wants to do this. Please, you know, do some basic maintenance and keep up with the mowing. Next item, Jackie.
At the workshop, I passed out some photos that were taken of the current situation with the rain gardens and the bioswale. And at the end of that, there was a discussion about having Elizabeth Hunter check into seeing if they had a division with their company that could look into it. Well, Jackie forwarded the email to me and it was going to be $3,200 to test the soil. And.
That's from Elizabeth was 3,200?
From a guy to drive down from Acne, test the soil. And let's see, come down with a crew with some experience. And.
I made believe that night was gonna go find some buffalo grass and stick it in the ground and hope it rained and flooded it and keep it watered for a year and it'd be okay.
Well, in the meantime, I've done this. I met with a group of Carter Lake, very knowledgeable citizens, which have a pretty good background in this kind of thing. And they discussed some possibilities. Some of them are here tonight. And then I talked with the Pot County Extension, who does water, soil testing. They charge $20 and give you recommendations for plants. And I reached out to the West Potawatomi Soil and Water Conservation District, who also come out. They do a lot with rain garden design and planning, I was told. But I haven't heard back from them yet. But they also will come out and do things such as workshops. And then I spoke with an engineering company who agreed that the rocks that we currently had thrown into the rain gardens are not usually what you would do as far as how you build them. And then I did some other research on rocks, why you don't want to put rocks in there. And then I had a discussion with Brent Henson, who's working on our city administrator. And he said, One of the responsibilities of a new city manager would be making sure that we have workers in place who are trained to do things like this properly.
Wasn't that what happened to previous rain gardens? We had nobody to maintain them. They died out and I was into them.
Well, we had, we had nobody that.
So it doesn't matter if we go ahead and spend $3,000, $5,000, or $10,000. If they don't get maintained, we're back to step one.
We, we've never had anybody who's followed through after our two people left.
It's been a complaint since I've been sitting here for probably 10 years. I mean, no one's ever been happy with the rain gardens. So I mean, it would be great if you have the time and some expertise to come up with some ideas or some plans on how to put these together. Everything has to be low to no maintenance.
Did the council allocate a certain amount of money per year for it and try to create like a committee for it or something? Is that, is that the direction or what do we do?
Uh, there's a group of people that would like to work on it. And I don't know if they want to speak or with some of the ideas. Or if they'd like to come in front of the council and just kind of share.
I mean, the one that, the one we just did out here that has the rocks, it looks really nice. I mean, it may not be plants that everybody picks, but they, I think it looks really good. I mean.
Does it work?
I think so.
I think it works.
Seems to be working, I say.
I mean, you got, we have at least four, I mean, four rain gardens plus the one out front out here. I mean, our volunteers are gonna wear out quickly because there's a lot of work to do. But if they're, if they're willing to do it, I don't have a problem with them.
But supposedly, once you establish them with the correct plants, the native, the native plants, they become easier to maintain.
Well, they've been going for 20 years and they're not established yet.
Oh, and they get mowed off, they can't get established. That doesn't happen. The water's been off.
Why is the water off? We got sprinkler system down there. So what do you?
Come on up if you got a question.
What do you ask to do?
You alright?
Come on up.
Or you don't, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Listen with me.
Okay.
Are the rain gardens to filter water going into the lake?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Correct.
That was why they were originally.
Yes, ma'am.
Planned. And so I don't know much about this, but what I hear from neighbors is that the original plan was starting to work for a while. It was starting to work in the city, not accusing anybody, previous administration changed how this process was working and put in what.
It's on its way. Heyo.
God, I hope not.
Normally have responsibility for covering the cost of maintenance. Like they mow the lawn. The lawn was established by the waterfront. If they're doing a filtration system that is going to protect the integrity of the lake, wouldn't the city also protect the rain gardens and maintain them? Just a question.
We had been maintaining that way up to a certain point, until they all died off. Like Jason said, I mean, we had the one out front done by a company. I mean, we had the one at the community center done by an engineering company. I know you're saying that the rocks aren't correct. I mean, we've had two or three of these redone in the last couple of years because everybody has been, for a decade, they're not right.
I just spoke to another engineer today on the phone. And I asked him about the rocks. And he said, You would normally wouldn't put rocks in a rain garden.
How about we do this? We have you take this rain guards by the horn. You get ahold of these people, write up a plan.
Some of them are here.
Write up a plan, what they want to do, how they want to do it. And we'll see if we can get you a little bit of money for it. Yes, assess the situation and see what we gotta do. Yeah, pretty simple.
Let's get in and put on the workshop too. Let's set a plan.
Put on your little gardening gloves and go to town. Aren't they the same thing?
Casey Hoffman, I live at 1418 Linwood Street. Wanna jump ahead then? On your, in your package, you got some pictures. Somewhere around six years ago, if you take a look at that, there's a blue, there's some blue board in there. That's a plastic board there. That's an, that's an underhole or.
Give us one second to pull these pictures. Okay, I got you. What page are they?
This is at the bioswale at 1416.
Page 35.
This is between you and the big A-frame?
I live in the big A-frame.
Okay.
That blue board in there is a plastic board. It's an underpin where the, and the reason it's blue, distinguish it to the area, area and the soil composition by which it holds. When that board gets exposed, that flow line has become impacted. An immediate response is needed. In your package, you'll see where the water has backed up from the lake into the bioflow. The date on the bottom of that is 24, I think the 8th month, the 13th. About a month before that, Aaron was down there looking at that. And what you see right now is way beyond the control. But six years ago, one single board was exposed. I called the city and within two hours, they came down and fixed it by bringing a wheelbarrow of dirt on their gator. And two or three loads, a six-inch gabion rock or a riprap to put in the back line, in the back line.
So is the blue supposed to be exposed or buried?
It's buried. There should be two layers of it.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's, that soil composition has to have a locking mat. Alright? Now, if you look at where the water came in, that's a good picture there, you will see on the left-hand side, the fence post that you're looking at. That is the top of what is called the check dam. That runs level all the way across the top. That check dam has been blown out.
The big rocks you're calling the check dam?
The big rocks form the check dam.
Okay.
Okay. Now, there is roots from the trees exposed. And Laura had to leave, but Laura's an engineer for the Corps of Engineers. And she, her and I talked about the hydraulics that has happened in that situation. And she used the term that the piping. And if there is piping in there, now, I'm not talking about a plastic piping. In this reference, it talks about a flow line. That's the piping she's talking of. Has been established at the bottom, underneath the roots that held this ground together with this blue plastic board. And now there's a possibility that the whole, the whole check dam, and that's what it's called, a check dam, is gonna be blown out of there.
There's not a possibility. That entire thing is washed out underneath.
It's washed out, but it hasn't blown out the rock at that level. It's blown out the rock at the top level. That, that was still in place when you took a look at it.
When'd you look at this? About that time of the?
Yeah, around then. And it needs to be torn up, regraded and cleaned up and.
The only way is to reconstitute, dig it up, try to save the tree roots that are in there, not damage them.
The flow line needs to be adjusted. So in a heavy, in a heavy rain is just gonna do more damage. That's what's happening. When we have good washout rains that you have a volume of water that has weight to it, it carries the dirt away. And that mat should be catching the dirt. That's the design of that. But now it's allowed to go under it.
So what we're talking about, the buffer zone that's in there, is the first, is the first vegetation that catches that water. Then it goes on down into the built, the built environment, which is the tall grass. This bioswale has a berm in it that comes up like in this fashion. It's not a straight berm like you'd see at the Papio Creek where it comes up. Then it's got a flat berm. It's got a ramp berm. When the water gets too high during heavy storms, it'll roll up on that berm. And we can see how bad it got. And this backs the water in the street. It's the way it's designed, it's an inconvenience as it slowly triculates down. But what we're gonna see from now on, it's gonna run down like a torrent. And if there is a pipe, which I suspect there is, a natural pipe design, it's just gonna rip. That watershed shows you that when the, when the lake got high, it came into the bioswale. It's not designed to work that way. So I'm just here to ask if, you know, when something else can be done down there to help mitigate the problem in there. This is part of the drainage system, system that you have and I have in the city.
The guy who built the house that you live in took care of this. Peter Parker, he was part of the watershed and everything down here.
But he didn't build it.
No, he maintained it. He maintained it.
No, he didn't maintain it because the city mows it. The city's responsibility.
He kept it together. I don't know if he mowed it. But I worked with the guy for 20 years. And I know this was his passion to keep it off of his street. It percolated down. So we need to look into just refurbishing this whole area.
And repurposing would be, put a storm sewer in or fix the.
Refurbishing, he said.
Refurbishing, oh, I'm sorry.
Put the swell back in. Put a dish.
So then we can expect sometime that we fix this problem before it becomes a bigger problem?
We'll see.
We'll see.
We'll see. It's on the list.
On our list, yep.
All I wanted to do is get on a list because it never got on a list for, for a year now.
I, I don't, Aaron, did you bring this?
I had talked to Bob about it a little bit. We didn't have a plan on moving forward with it. I didn't know if it was something to, maybe he'd pass on to the parks guys and we had a normal plan of the bioswale. That's like, it's not like we just need to make a committee, kind of with the stormwater. I would say this goes right with stormwater. I mean, this should be something that's talked to in the stormwater committee.
Then everybody I talk to at the DNR refers it back to stormwater.
Yeah, I mean, this is where we, this is where we lost it because we lost the stormwater committee. We started, stopped doing that. We are slowly started that committee now and working back into that. And this is something that needs to be incorporated to that. Some funds need to be pushed towards.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Do you have people on that committee that?
Yes.
Understand it?
Yep.
I mean, this one should be easier. It's just a grading.
Yeah, this doesn't seem.
We're not gonna, like, if we're not gonna get down the line of maybe employing somebody in the parks or having a parks department that can maintain bioswales, areas of drainage, then like you said, we need to go in there and just dig it up, put a stormpipe in it. And not have, and not have a drainage, not have a swell. Let's just put a 15-inch storm drain down there with an inlet and cover it back up and they have to deal with it no more. So I mean, it's, if we're not gonna maintain them, we're not gonna employ somebody to maintain them, we gotta do away with them.
Is that what the new houses have? Like the one down by?
Yeah, that's what we just talked about last week.
The one that's collapsed?
Hammered out, a line that was.
That runs directly to the lake?
Yep. But the reason they do is they try to keep the water runoff from the, you know, you need to have some kind of.
Keep the goodness.
Absorption to get rid of the garbage. And a storm drain like that would just, the city would have to maintain some kind of collection basin.
Well, we just like the one down on.
Yep.
17th and P.
It's a filter of something. It's, it's the same thing. It's for the water to slowly dissipate. So you don't have just all the oils and everything and garbage and rocks and everything run directly into the water. It's, it's made to build up here, be collected, and somebody can maintenance it. It's just never been maintenance.
Alright, we'll put that on the agenda for your next stormwater committee. I think you're right, that, that committee can look into some sort of.
This is the, this is the direction of where it should be.
Alright. It's like Clint, 122 Carter Lake Club.
Just still in our process. I have some things from Clear Title I need to get back from them. And I'll file with all that stuff. I've got all the information I need to move forward. The one thing I would tell you is I really would strongly urge you to switch gears on the method of enforcing it from the building code to that 657A process I was telling you. It's a lot easier and cheaper and will result in a better outcome for you.
So, so what is the road forward? I mean, this, this is a hot topic. I get lots of people. I mean, is it two months, two weeks? What is the road forward?
Oh, in the court system, with, so in a 657A action, I would say 90 days.
I mean, I, I don't think we're here to tell you how to do your job. You, you feel the best route and move forward with.
Is that the process? We're doing the 657A now?
That's what I want to do. That's what I'll do.
Then do it.
The other thing is, I, depending on the nature of it, no matter what you do, outside time of a year, that's how long it will take. If they get into, if we get into contested actions. But I don't believe that you will have any difficulty. I don't think we'll encounter any difficulties with it. But it's just the nature of, of court.
Timeline in court, yeah.
Yes.
Do we need action for us to tell you to do that then?
No, I'm good. I have everything set up.
It's just an update. What's the number using the six? What was it?
657A dot 10B.
And if he's gonna arbitrate that.
10B?
If he's gonna arbitrate that, it could take a year.
Yep, if he fights it.
And the quickest it could be is.
90 days.
We shouldn't say that. Six months. Alright. Ordinance is resolution. Approved pay application for water valve project.
And this is for the final of what, the original contract?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Public comment. Roll call, please. I believe, just one quick thing. I think Backland's been doing a really great job with their shutdowns over the nights. They had one little hiccup one night. But other than that, I think they're doing a really great job as far as the inconvenience to the public. And I hope we can continue with business with them. That's all I have.
I think their experience paid off.
Yep. Roll call.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Communication from the public, item A. Communication from the public, item A, Gene White, close the road. They do it every year, never have any issues, always been respectful to everybody around.
I got motion to approve.
What road you closing? Can we have the address?
Can we have the road you're closing and time?
Middle Road.
Avenue P, ninth and tenth.
Avenue P?
Same one every year.
Yes.
I'll second.
What ti, what time? I'm sorry. All right. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jeremiah?
Jeremiah Hannan?
His is, Carter Lake Improvement Club would like to block Q Street between Eighth and Ninth for an event.
It's not till like August sometime.
That's the dog days?
Yeah.
So this is the dog days, the summer, their annual event. They're just looking to block off...
Same as they always do.
Q Street, they leave Ninth Street open. They block on the west side of Ninth, down to about the edge of their property.
Are they stating timeframes?
Uh, there's usually an all-day or...
It's usually, it's usually all-day. They open it up in the, you know, late night, but it's, it's all-day.
I'm motion to approve. I just didn't know if we need to state the time.
Second.
Public comment? Roll call, please.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Down to comments. Any citizens' comments? Come on up.
Hi, Bob Wall. And this time, I don't even have a complaint or anything. I was just gonna, wanna give a shout-out to Bobby Peck for, every time I drive by the ballfield, he's getting that thing looking really good, and he's up there late at night and everything else, and he's really taking care of the ballfield really well. And also, I didn't get on the agenda, I keep forgetting, and I know I'm gonna be running out of time, but August sixteenth, we wanna have a ban at our house that we had last year. So I don't know, what is it, ten o'clock or eleven o'clock we have to quit by? I just wanna get the approval, 'cause I get so much stuff going on at work and stuff, I might forget to...
I don't believe you need approval, so you're not blocking streets or anything, just a ban, your private property.
I just wanted to make sure it's okay.
Play on. You're good.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Community Day is the twenty-seventh. I beat ya.
I made your comment on the way in. Jeanette Banks, Parks and Rec Board Secretary. First of all, I wanna thank everyone that came out to the fishing derby. The kids had a great time, so thank you for, for attending that.
I'm terrible. I said I'd...
Carter Lake Days, July twenty-sixth. I highly encourage you, your friends, your family, your kids, anybody that has a business, a sports club, a golf cart, please sign up for the parade. You're killing me. For the festival, right now, Tyler sent me the updated list for vendors at the festival, and we have forty-four that are signed up for food trucks and vendors and information booths, so...
It's all gonna be at the ballpark again, right?
Yes. Yeah, the vendors, vendors are all gonna be at Field One. All of the kid stuff's gonna be at Field Two, and so we're very excited. So, we have upped the budget for the stuff for the kids, for all the blowups. We hopefully have enough room for everything that we've ordered, so we're looking forward to it.
Parade starts at ten. The events at the...
Parade's at ten?
Ten. The events at the ballfield start at noon.
Yep.
Fireworks are at dark. The band plays up until the fireworks go.
Yes, so if you have a golf cart, if you have a scooter, if you have a business, please, it's free to join the parade, so...
It's a, it's a free day for everybody. We try, we try to make it family fun. You know, there, there's no charge to ride the inflatables or the rides.
Everything's free, so...
Thanks for what you guys do.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
When do I need to register?
Tonight. Add him down.
Um...
Six slots.
I don't see, all right. Um, Parks and Rec.
We have six last year, Aaron?
What was that?
Didn't we have six slots last year?
I think so, something like that.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else?
Visit our website, or you can call up there and talk to Tyler, or one of the guys.
Are you taking care of this?
And, yeah. I think Carolyn's already said she's gonna pull your, pull your tractor, so...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Jackie Carl, anything? Victor?
Uh, nope, our condolences to the Rosenberg family. Actually, Vera passed away, and so did the son-in-law's mother. So they lost both their mothers within the same week, so condolences to the family.
Jackie?
I was called last year after the fireworks, and I kinda put it off, but there was one street that never came to get permission to close. It was a pretty busy street. And I had a call from the people who lived across the street that had a lot of fireworks to clean up afterwards, because it was, it was one of them. I don't know, do we do anything if somebody goes ahead and closes their street?
I mean, we hope everybody's respectful to neighbors as far as going out and, and trying to control people's celebrations. It's a little difficult. I mean, you just gotta get along with your neighbors. I mean, if your neighbors having fireworks, grab a beer and join them.
Well...
Just one beer?
Two.
We're talking about an older person that doesn't, isn't gonna be...
I agree, Jackie. People should be respected and clean up their fireworks. I mean...
If somebody's closing a street or they're regular doing it, and they're not cleaning up after themselves, they, somebody should voice their opinion and not make it easy for them to do it. You take care of what you do. If you wanna do it again, you gotta take care of it.
Get that address and those people to the PD. Like Aaron said, you know, it's, it's PD's enforcement. If they drive around town the next day and see a big, big debris pile like that, there should be some consequences.
Yeah.
Aaron?
I just wanna say the pick of Jason was, was well thought. You know, you don't see the, the Citizen of the Year being a young guy or a young citizen very often. Jason puts a lot of time into the city, cares a lot.
You're still young.
Jacob?
All reserved now.
Nope.
Citizen of the Year?
Uh, speech. Thank you for the award. And I just wanted to thank Jackie, she put together, Jackie Wall put together, cleaned up, and had probably fifteen, twenty of your friends came, and... Sorry, I couldn't make it, but you, you did all the planning and all the work. I mean, we appreciate it.
We actually, we probably had about twenty-five to thirty people there.
Well, good.
We'll name a rain garden after. How about that, Mr.?
Clint? You have anything?
Thanks, Jackie.
I mean, I, nobody's perfect. Our, our PD does a pretty good job, guys. And I, it's, it's very disturbing when we receive information like we did, but...
Everybody just wants to do the right thing, also.
Yes, I agree. There's nothing personal. I'm, I'm sorry people out here feel that the, the weed abatements are personal, but I'm telling you what, every time they hand out twenty of those, I get ten calls the same way.